Bill, can you hear me?
Yes.
Do you know how I turn my speaker on? Because I just did hear you, actually.
We can hear you.
Tony, say something.
This is right. Can you hear me?
I can. Okay, I'm all set. I got a little nervous here. If I couldn't hear you guys, I don't know what I do.
You don't have to say anything.
Oh, God.
Is it over?
Yes. You missed it. You missed it. We gave you a salary raise.
The minority leader, yeah.
Phil took a cut.
Who's on the ordinance committee? I see Greg Harla's name. I thought it was Tony Sutton.
It's you and me, Tony Sutton, Greg, and who's your other guy?
Oh, Greg's on there? I didn't know. Is this our first ordinance meeting since the new board?
No. I think so. I think we had one in January or, yeah, maybe February. No, Ray Ray Ray's the other member of the ordinance committee, right, Ray?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes. We're waiting. Oh, but it's not time, right?
No, it's about five minutes. I know, Tony, you Tony Weeks, are you there?
I am.
Okay. Would you be able to do all of the noticing information since I don't have it?
Um, I don't have it either. Phil, do you have it?
I don't. Phil, do you have the notices, the public notices, your New Haven Register, all that stuff, posting the ordinance?
You know what? They didn't. They didn't give that to us, but it was in the New Haven Register last Wednesday.
Okay.
What was that date?
Um, April 29th, maybe?
Yeah, April 27th.
Twenty seven? Yeah. No, Friday was the first. Thursday was the 30th.
Twenty ninth.
Yeah, twenty ninth.
The twenty ninth, yeah.
So I think we're all here.
Could someone please bring Ray back to earth?
I thought I'd take a sentimental journey.
He's broadcasting from the galaxy Avatar.
This is from the spaceship Galactica.
I always knew you were ahead of your time, Ray.
Uh, I know.
Greg Harley, you're with us, right?
I am.
Okay.
Just a minor technical difficulty involving a can of club soda. The laptop.
Oh.
That's not good.
Yeah.
That's bad.
I see the dog. I see the dog is with us.
Nope, I'm here.
Good evening, Ray.
Good evening, dog. I mean, John.
My dog is here.
What'd you do? Sit on him? He won't listen to you, though.
No, he doesn't listen to me at all. He's up here because he's checking. He protects us from the FedEx and the UPS guy. I don't know what would happen without him. Bark for a half hour if FedEx just goes up the street. Justin, you're here, right?
Yes, I'm here.
He's just, he's in the office with you, Phil, right?
Yes, he's the host.
Yeah, he's, yeah, he's got, he's got the switchboard.
Yep. He's hosting.
Don't you start barking.
Let him bark under public comment, Frank.
Yeah, if you could, if he could bark at the appropriate time, it would be great. I'd bring him to the meet to the city hall meetings with me. But he follows me from room to room. No matter what I do, he's always behind me.
I think, I think your wife taught him how to do that.
Well, I never, I don't own a dog. I didn't want a dog. And then one day she, the first dog died. And I said, okay, let's, let's have a respectful period before we get another one. And like two weeks later, she's bringing this, she goes over to the rescue thing in Bridgeport, comes home with this Yorkshire terrier. And I said, you know, I thought we would do, you know, show some respect for Murray, who had just, you know, passed away. But I said, if I tell all my kids, I said, if anything happens to me, make sure she's not bringing some dude in here in like, like a week later or something, you know, I mean, give it, you know, a few months anyway.
Two weeks.
Two weeks. But I'm the one that walks him all the time. And I don't even want a dog or a cat or anything.
That's great. Follow you around.
I like goldfish, you know, because when, when it's over, you just flush them down the toilet.
Oh, my God.
All right, I think we got everyone here. It's, it's 7:00 PM. Good evening, everyone who's in attendance here virtually. We are, this is the, May meeting of the Milford Board of Alderman Ordinance Committee, virtual ordinance committee meeting. Today, Monday, May 4th, as noticed in the New Haven Register, April 29th, 2020. Madam Secretary, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Janatassia.
Here.
Alderman Harla.
Here.
Alderman Frank Smith.
Here.
Alderman Sutton.
Here.
Alderman Vitale.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Thank you, Tony. Tonight, we are going to consider a, an ordinance which amends Chapter 17.1 Pension Plan for City Employees, Article 1, in general, Section 17.1 through 5 of the City of Milford Code of Ordinances, employees to whom this chapter does not apply. This is really merely a revision to the existing ordinance, which there are six parts. And the fifth part, I'm, I'm going to presume that this is something that everyone's read. And perhaps maybe I'll call, if I could have a motion to suspend the reading of the entire ordinance.
Someone?
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we'll, we'll suspend the reading of the entire ordinance. This one, all we're basically doing is striking Section 5. Any employee hired in the position of the Operations Director for the Milford Listman Landing Marina would fall under employees to whom the chapter does not apply. This is mainly a housekeeping item. In the wake of Mr. Swift's departure as our Marina Director, Mr. Swift came to that position after a long career with the City of Milford and was relinquishing his second pension eligibility. So this really, since we have a new Marina Director, will put that individual, take that restriction out of the ordinance so that that individual will be eligible for the pension as, as written in the, in the, in the rest of the ordinance. I don't know. I'm going to check with Justin here, but I wanted to ask if anyone, if there were any public comment on this for, or let's say for the ordinance, speaking in favor of the ordinance. Justin, I'm depending if you, you see anybody that's raised their hand or anything. Hearing none, anyone? Yeah, yeah, Tony.
I, I would just suggest that, that you ask if there's anyone who's participating in the Zoom call to either unmute themselves, indicate that they'd like to make a comment, or perhaps to encourage them to utilize the raise your hand feature on, on their Zoom.
Right. Right, yeah. Thank you, Tony. I don't know if everybody's familiar, and if you look at the Zoom screen in the lower right-hand corner, there's a box that says raise hand. Now that goes to the host, in this case, Justin, who will then let us know that somebody wants to speak. But anybody that is on Zoom that wishes to be heard on this, to speak in favor or against the ordinance, and I presume in the rest of the meeting, please touch the raise your hand button and Justin will, will alert us that you want to speak. Also, I think we have this under control, but since there's more people on the Zoom, on the participants list, this meeting is, of course, limited only to the five members of the ordinance committee and anybody where it is asked to speak, including the mayor. So I'm going to again call for any public comment on this, anybody for or against the ordinance?
Mr. Chairman, I apologize. Before I was on mute, there is no one with their hand raised.
Okay, I'm going to call the, close the public hearing section of the meeting. And I will, I will entertain a motion from the floor.
Someone?
Thank you, Alderman Sutton.
Mr. Chairman, I move to forward to the full board for its consideration in ordinance amending Chapter 17.1 Pension Plan for City Employees, Article 1, in general, Section 17.1-5 of the City of Milford Code of Ordinances, employees to whom this chapter does not apply.
Thank you, Alderman Sutton. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Anyone care to, any on the board care to comment, have any discussion? Alderman Janatassio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I do understand the purpose of this. I, I just want some clarification on the new revised ordinance. It says anyone that is rehired on section, it says Section 5 in blue, but it was Section 6, any rehired employee who is entitled to receive or is currently receiving a benefit under this, Chapter 17.1, who elects to waive the right to receive benefits under this retirement system of the City of Milford with respect to service on and after the date of rehire. So if the city attorney could please clarify that and just give me an example of how that would, that section would take, take action if, if there was a case such as that, if you can just give me an example of that. Because it says rehired. I just want to clarify that, rehired.
Mr. Mayor, is the city attorney available?
Janatassio, I think the best example, most recent example, that would be Steve Fornier. Chapter 17 wouldn't apply to him. It didn't apply to him because similar to Ray Swift, he has retired and was receiving pension benefits, but was not entitled to receive a second pension as the assistant to the mayor during his time.
So Steve Fornier was the, was the example to section, I guess, is that, is that Section 5? Is that considered?
It's Section 6. Upon passage, it will become. It's Section 6, upon passage, it will become Section 5.
5, correct. We're not debating that section, is that correct? We're just changing the.
Correct. The section we're talking about tonight in terms of revising, the, the new Operations Director.
Right.
Will, the purpose of this is to make him eligible for pension, for the pension benefits.
Right.
He was not, he was specifically, his position was specifically called out or excluded from the pension.
Okay.
The next section, now Section 6, soon to be Section 5, assuming the full board approves the ordinance is more generic, doesn't define, but basically says you can't get two pensions. If you're retired.
Right. And then the language, who elects to waive the right, that person would have to elect to waive the right?
Well, into this section, it's, it's a little redundant. I'll, I'll give you that. You're not entitled to two. But yes, Stephen waived his right upon hiring as deputy or assistant to the mayor.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I just, thank you for clarifying that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Alderman Janatassio. Is there any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we have a motion and a second.
Oh, we got Alderman Vitale.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Ray. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. To you, John, it is redundant because it says any retired, rehired employee who is entitled to receive, then who elects to waive the right. So can that be, can that be cleaned up, that language?
Mr. Chair, through you to Alderman Vitale, I'm sure it could. I don't know how old that language is. But I'm sure we could.
I mean, just, yeah, just because this, it almost doesn't make any sense, to be honest with you.
I'm looking at it and I agree with you, Ray.
Okay, whatever. But, you know, make it a little clearer. Less is best on that, probably. Thank you.
I'm not sure if this is an indication, but under Section 4, it mentions an option not to participate retirement system in writing 30 days of September 26, 1977. So that may be the approximate date of the original ordinance. All right, we have a, a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? I'm sorry. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. There any other business to come before our committee here tonight? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Someone?
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor to adjourn?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we're just going to stay on this for the regular meeting, right?
Yeah.
Correct. I'm afraid if we log off, we'll never get back in.
Yeah.
Seven twenty-nine. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the May fourth, two thousand twenty regular meeting of the Milford Board of Alderman. This meeting is being conducted remotely, and as we begun, I wanted to take the opportunity to highlight a few guidelines to ensure business runs efficiently and that all statutory and administrative rules are followed. In accordance with the Freedom of Information Act and Governor Lamont's executive orders, this meeting is being recorded and will be made available on the city of Milford's website. If a member of the public would like to speak, please utilize the raise your hand feature via Zoom or state your name if you're using the conference line. Please do not speak over other individuals, and when you are not speaking, please keep your phones and computers on mute. After being recognized to speak, please state your name and address prior to making a statement. With that, will everyone please stand up wherever you are and join me as we pledge allegiance and salute our flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Adam Secretary, will you please take the role?
Alderman Beatty.
Present.
Alderman Gaynor.
Here.
Alderman Genitatio.
Here.
Alderman Golden.
Here.
Alderman Grant.
Here.
Alderman Hardiman.
Here.
Alderman Harla.
Here.
Alderman Parente.
Here.
Alderman Frank Smith.
Here.
Alderman Winthrop Smith.
Here.
Alderman Sutton.
Here.
Alderman Tranquilly.
Here.
Alderman Vitro.
Here.
Alderman Vitally.
Here.
Alderman Willis.
Here.
All present.
All fifty are present. We do have a quorum. The next portion of the meeting is devoted to public comment. Statements are limited to the legislative function of the Board of Alderman. The time limit granted to each speaker shall be three minutes. Presidents, taxpayers, and electors may address the board at this time or provide comment through email. The board encourages speakers not to express derogatory, insensitive, or offensive statements or to engage in personal attacks against individuals. In order to allow everyone an opportunity to speak, I'd ask that everyone please limit their comments to three minutes. Anyone wishing to speak to the board or address the board can do so at this time. I see no. I see no response, so we'll move on to agenda item number three. In consideration of the minutes from March second, two thousand twenty meeting, please correct the error on page one, item three. The date listed should read February third, two thousand twenty, and not December third, two thousand twenty. With that, Alderman Sutton, agenda item number three, consideration of minutes for the regular meeting.
Mister Chairman, I move that the board approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Alderman held on April sixth, two thousand twenty, containing the amendment or edit that you just spoke of.
I second the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The call, motion passes unanimously. Agenda item number four, there is no special meeting minutes to consider. Agenda item number five, Chairman's report. I just want to wish everyone a safe and healthy spring that's already upon us. I want everybody to behave themselves and wear your mask where you're supposed to be wearing it and keep your social distance as we've been suggested or demanded by our governor. And I think everybody will be happier ever after. So, agenda item number six, Mayor's Report and Recommendations. Mister Mayor, is there a report?
Good evening, Mister Chairman, members of the board. I hope everybody is staying healthy. As Milford continues to respond to this pandemic, our city operations are still going full strength. The people that work for the city of Milford are fire police, our public works, all of those employees that work each day for the city of Milford are going above and beyond making sure city operations continue to move forward as smoothly as, you know, this pandemic allows while still making sure that all of us are safe, that the public is safe, that our collective city employees are safe as well. I did bring to your attention earlier this evening that we did issue some revisions to our outdoor recreational facilities. We did open up some recreational amenities effective today. Our pickleball courts, our tennis courts, our community gardens, our skate park, the Orchard Golf Course, which I know had a lot of discussion with this board, and we did it all with some restrictions associated with all of those facilities. One other big change is that our city beaches are now going to be resident only for the time being. Milford resident only for Milford City Beaches. Obviously, it doesn't apply to Silver Sands State Park. One of the driving forces behind that is that a couple of the other communities that are nearby, like Fairfield and Westport, they did restrict their beaches to residents only. Given the fact that we would be inundated as the weather gets warmer, we are limiting our beaches effective today to residents only. City of Milford residents only. We are also designating some parking areas on our city streets to be resident-only parking. You'll acquire a two thousand nine or a two thousand twenty City of Milford Beach sticker, so please be aware of that. Also, we did in panel a reopen Milford Advisory Group. The names of those industry leaders are listed in your agenda. It is being stood up by all of the city departments, but Julie Nash of our Economic Development Office, the Chamber Director Pam Stineski, and our Health Director Deepa Joseph are taking the lead and making sure that the mission of that group, which is to reopen Milford in a safe way so that as we reopen, we do the background, the work that it takes for strategic planning and communication so that everybody opens safely and our economic engine continues to thrive. And I do want to take just a moment to read the names of this advisory group, which include for the manufacturing sector, John Schuld of Swiss Tech Machinery America. Retail industry is represented by Ken Sterba of the Connecticut Post Mall. Our healthcare sector is represented by Doctor Cliff Kramer. Our financial sector is represented by Robert Cray of Patriot Bank. The restaurant and food service industry is represented by Elena Fusco of Bin One Hundred. In the real estate industry by Al Frankie of Advisor. And again, they are going to help with communication. They're going to help with planning as Milford and the rest of Connecticut and really the nation starts to reopen over the course of the next several months. So I do know that Julie Nash is on the line right now. She has joined us via Zoom. I know it's going to open up quickly to her to ask for your indulgence if she can make just a quick statement or remark about her involvement with this group.
Thank you, Ben, and thank you, Alderman. Yeah, so we collaborated last week with the Milford Chamber of Commerce and the mayor's office and industry leaders. We wanted to be on the forefront of creating our own local reopen Milford Advisory Group that will mirror what's happening in the state but be specific to what we can allow in Milford. And a lot of our own local zoning and ordinances are going to come into play as we move forward for the various industries that need assistance and help, whether it be funding or, you know, supply chain. I'm not sure how much information you guys got from Mayor Blake prior to this, but what I can do right now is I'm going to share my screen so you can see a little bit more about what the intention of the group is. And here we go. Can everybody see this?
Yes.
Okay, great. So we announced the Milford Advisory Group today, and what we want to concentrate on is communication with the key business sectors and stakeholders in our community to devise a plan that's going to create that confidence in the marketplace that right now is so dire. I do want to say that what our businesses in Milford have done already is astounding. The way they have pivoted and innovated to create new revenue streams and engage a community and give back to the community has really been phenomenal. I'm so impressed, and I think that really speaks to what we all do and how we communicate with our organizations and the folks in our community. We've always been a team in Milford, and I think the fact that we are a team continues to make a difference. Our economic growth has been astounding over the past ten years. I think with the fundamentals of what we've put in place is going to carry us through this nicely. I think because we have these relationships, we're going to be able to really get all these sectors back into play, and I think that at the end of this, we're really going to be a better Milford. Some of the things our group is going to concentrate on, you can see here below. Bringing employees back to work, some new business models, working from home, supply chain, utilities, offer resources and connections, a plan to provide the confidence in the marketplace, corporate values, legislative priorities, corporate responsibility, and tourism. These are, as Mayor Blake mentioned, these are the bios of the industry leaders that we've chosen to had each of these sectors in that, again, that was in conjunction with the Milford Chamber of Commerce. I think we have a great group here that's really going to be able to make a difference, and I can just quickly speak about some of the things that have been coming up on each of these sectors already. So for instance, manufacturing, actually manufacturing right now is booming. They are, they have so much work that they just don't have enough employees. So one of the things we're really going to have to look at quickly is how to provide them with enough employees to do the work they need to be done and how to do that safely. One of the other issues that the manufacturing sector is talking about is supply chain. So a lot of the supply chain is in other countries right now, which is making it very difficult for us to access some of the things that we need. So we're looking forward to bringing some of those supply chain businesses back on to US soil and hopefully in Milford where our manufacturers can get what they need to do the business they need to do. Another issue with retail we're seeing, and you know, retail for a very long time in the days of Amazon, they've been struggling. So trying to find innovative ways to live right now. And what we're looking at again has been the same thing you're looking at for a very long time to make sure that we're providing experiences, and we need to provide those experiences in a way that's safe for our community and also safe for the retailers that are offering these services as well. Healthcare, thankfully, we have Doctor Kramer and Deepa here to guide us in this direction, and that's something I don't feel totally comfortable remarking on, so I'm going to leave that to Doctor Kramer and Deepa. Bob Cray, VP of Patriot Bank. So in the banking industry, they have had to deal a lot with how to handle the PPP, how to process those, how to either accept new clients or to defer new clients, how to accept the money they have and get it out into the community as quickly as possible. And I think that they're going to have a lot of issues going forward. And I want to say that, and I don't want to say that in a negative way, issues meaning we're going to have to assist them and help them in a way to help our small businesses grow and get that money out. Restaurants, one of the things, and just locally, that we're going to have to deal with is May twentieth. We don't have a lot of guidance right now as to how restaurants can operate outside of them being outside. They can offer services outside, but a lot of our restaurants, as you know, don't have outside facilities. So one of the things, you know, people are floating around is taking advantage of parking spaces and parking lots that accompany these restaurants in laxing our permitting and zoning rules to allow them to do that. Potentially, River Street has that block of parking spaces there that could also be dining out spots. Some of the folks that are handicapped would need to drop their cars maybe at Watson or Parsons and then maybe have a golf cart pick them up and drop them off at these places. These are all things that we need to talk about and figure out how we're going to move forward to make sure that the restaurants survive, but also the people can get out in a safe way. In real estate, May fourteenth, we are, we'll get this information out in the next couple of days. At May fourteenth, we're having a conversation with the new owners of Wheeler's Farm Road along with Al Frankie, who is on this commission, and also Kevin Weersman, who is a commercial Realtor, and we're going to talk about office space. Office space has been changing for many years as well because work from home became, the digital access became so broad now, obviously, that's, we're forced to do it. So how is office space going to look in the next generation? And that's what the name of the webinar is, Office Space, What's Next? And I think that in Milford, we're in a good place because we are centrally located. I think that we have an opportunity to open up regional offices where people can take some of that empty office space and have some of their employees touch base here in Milford, but also work from home and keep the traffic off of the roads. So that's a little bit about what we're going to be doing. Obviously, things are going to be changing as we move forward and how we have new directives. We want to make sure we have deliverables at the end of this, and we don't just sit and chat. So we want to break it up into these three phases, and again, this might change, but what we're looking at it now is fifty percent open, seventy-five percent open, to a hundred percent open, and the committee will work until we get to that hundred percent open standpoint. So I'd love to have all of your support as we move forward. We want to make this as transparent as possible, so you'll all get invitations to our monthly meetings. Our first one is tomorrow at noon, and I will send that Zoom invitation out, and any information that you want to send to me or get in contact with me, I'm happy to share it. We also are lucky to have Meredith Rubin of EVP Solutions in Milford and Tim Phelan of the Connecticut Retail Merchants Association are both serving on the Governor's Advisory Group. I spoke with them this morning, and they will be liaisons to our group so we can have access to that information and get answers to our community as we need. They're both great partners of ours. And then I think some of the other conversation we need to include into the business's reopening again is education. And I think that's something that a lot of people are missing right now is to make sure that we talk about businesses opening in tandem with education. with education and schools opening and camps. I think they all, 55% of the working force are women and working mothers. So I think we need to take that into consideration as we move forward and the conversation needs to be in tandem. I also would like to say, you know, I think the narrative, I think Milford has a real great opportunity here to be a shining star. I think we need to look at our community and make decisions that are best for our community. I think we all need to be on the same page and message in unison. And I hope that we can do that as we go forward. And again, I'd like all of you to attend these meetings and be a part of the conversation. And I think we can really just, Milford's just going to be better after this. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you, Julie.
Our economy moving forward as we reopen. Certainly happy to answer those questions. If there allows. Other than that, respectfully request a consideration and action items on the Agenda 8A through 8C and happy to answer those questions as they come up through the course of the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Julie, for that great presentation.
Mr. Chair.
It sounds good.
Mr. Chair.
Alderman Vitale.
Can we ask a couple of questions now? About, okay. Julie, thank you for your, all your work in this. And it was, was a great, a great, a great happening today when we saw from the mayor, the reopening of a lot of the pieces that we were looking for to open in the city. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, also. Just a couple of things, were the decisions that you announced today, Mr. Mayor, the result of that reopen Advisory Group coming together and making those decisions, number one?
No, they were driven by our local department heads, police, recreation, and most specifically, Deepa Joseph. So the advisory group is more for private industry and businesses as they reopen. That's why it's represented by the various business industries across our city. And as those industries reopen.
Okay, I would just, just hope and assume that if you're having an advisory group that those people could make some, were involved in some of the decisions also. But anyway, it's a good thing to hear. Julie, can you stop sharing so we can, I don't know. So we can get a larger picture of everything.
Sorry about that, my bad.
Thank you. The other thing is, were these people, given it, these groups that were open, were they given advance notice that they were opening tomorrow? For instance, the golf commission because they need to come up with some criteria or some rules of engagement when these people get on the golf course?
Well, I can tell you that members of the golf commission were advised last week. Okay. We talked to members of the golf commission. We have not announced it to all the people that play tennis or pickleball until today, just because.
No, but I think it's easier to create rules for pickleball as they get on the court, but sometimes to know when you're getting on the golf course, there are no flags or whatever the criteria would be, carts and all that stuff. Thank you, anyway, that's good. But I have a concern. Is there a reason why there's no representation from the Board of Aldermen on this committee?
I do know that Julie Nash invited all the members of the Board of Aldermen to this committee. Again, it's an open, public participatory group. You know, we are encouraging members of the public to be involved as well. We're encouraging specific, our government representatives, like the members of the Board of Aldermen, to get involved too. The focus of this is reopening industry and to have those voices from industry, you know, guiding this though is, is really the focus of the group.
Well, I, I look at the advisory group being different than having a say or wanting to say something at a, at a meeting. So if the advisory group is going to be really indicative of what's going to happen in the city, we being the, is it, when they make a decision, is it going to come to the Board of Aldermen for approval or ordinance of some sort? And if it is, I would find it tremendously valuable for these people that have an understanding to know that the Board of Aldermen would be representative on the advisory committee itself. I know there's a difference in participation and engagement of all the Board of Aldermen, but I don't remember here, maybe I missed it, but I don't remember anything inviting us on to this advisory group or being invited, except what Julie had indicated tonight, that we could join in on that Zoom tomorrow.
And again, this is an advisory group. Ultimately, they're going to pass on their advice or the recommendations to the Board of Aldermen, to the city, for ultimate adoption or enactment. So at the end of the day, these folks are a resource for businesses. They're a resource for our local city government, including members of the Board of Aldermen, that if we need to adopt their recommendations through an ordinance or whether the zoning board needs to adopt their recommendations through a zoning change or a new regulation, those are things that ultimately are, our community is going to participate in through the normal course of the adoption process. But this is a group that really is focused, hyper-focused on the local industries that make up Milford's economy.
And I know what you're saying, and having said that, I still find it strange that there isn't representation from the local government on that particular board, even though it has to come to the Board of Aldermen. I just find it, you know, it would be, yeah. I'm sure you have advisory Zoom meetings other than those that are going to become public. Well, I don't, I don't know if that's true or not. But anyway, I just, I just felt as though the board should have been represented on that group. Thank you.
Yeah, Alderman Vitale, and we just announced this group today. So, and I think that's really, if you can see the information I shared before, that the goal of this is to be as transparent as possible. So I invite you all to be part of this meeting tomorrow. I invite you all to be part of it as we go forward. I don't want anyone to feel that they're not, voices are not being heard. The, the purpose of this group though is to have our economic, our economic sectors represented. So when I created this group, I thought about our private businesses and I thought we would take those recommendations from our private businesses, just like we normally would do, and say, we would like X, Y, and Z to happen. You know, you happen to represent this organization, it's in your district, can you work with us on this? And that's our intention as we go forward, just like we would with any other enactment or adoption of ordinance. But I would love for all of you to be part of it on every step of the way. Because I think it's, like I said before, I think it's so important that we're all sharing in this dialogue. I think we all come to the table with so much knowledge and you all touch the community in different ways. If you're not part of it, I think we won't be successful. So if all of you can join us in every step of the way, I really would love for all of you to be part of it. Again, when you, when you talk about reopening, I would love the question to be is what's best for the community, not what's best for one industry or one organization or one group. And I think we can do that in Milford. And I think at the end of this, like I said, that if we make, we will be the shining star of how a community works together and how we get our economy reopened again with all of your input. You all bring so much value to the table. So I appreciate you all being there. And I'm sorry if you're not specifically on the advisory group, but consider yourself all on it right now because that's what we're doing. This is a community effort. I hope the public joins us. I hope that every person in the community gets involved in this conversation because you're all going to be heard. This is not something we don't want to have everybody involved in. This is something to get our community back on track, and that is the purpose of it.
Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
Other than that, Mr. Chairman, nothing further to report?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With no other questions, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 7. There is no unfinished business. So we'll move on to Agenda Item Number 8, New Business. Alderman Sutton, Agenda Item Number 8A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board approve the attached to our agenda Facilities Use Agreement between Yale University and the City of Milford and to authorize the mayor and city attorney to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents to effectuate said agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Alderman Ferente, Ferente, I'm sorry.
It's fine, thank you, through you, Chairman. I'm wondering if the mayor could tell the public a little bit more about this agreement that we have now with Yale?
Sure. Your Board last month at our April meeting adopted a almost identical agreement where the University of New Haven agreed to house first responders who were potentially exposed to COVID-19 but had not yet tested positive, but required isolation or, I guess, required a period where they were going to self-quarantine. And this agreement that we have with Yale is for first responders who actually do test positive. And it allows them to isolate or to quarantine at their facility. And this is an agreement with Yale that is almost the same, almost identical to the one that was approved a month ago.
Great, thank you.
Any more questions or discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I think that, given the new telephonic remote, I think we require a roll call vote for each motion.
Okay, sounds good. Roll call vote, Madam Secretary.
Alderman Beatty?
I think you might be on.
Alderman Gainer? Yes.
Alderman Genitasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Ferente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winterp Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
And Alderman Beatty, can you hear us? 14 yeses, because I don't have a response from Alderman Beatty.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. I would call that, for everyone voting, it would be unanimous for those that are voting. Moving on to Agenda Item 8B, Alderman Sutton.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Board approves the attached agreement to our packets between Milford Board of Education, City of Milford and Dr. Andrew Carlson and to authorize the mayor, director of health, and city attorney to take all steps necessary, including signing all documents to effectuate said agreement.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Genitasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the Board. My question is to Mayor Blake. Mayor Blake, has the stipend allocated for Dr. Carlson for his services, has that increased in dollars or is it the same?
Chairman, through you to Alderman Genitasio. It's my understanding that the stipend remains the same as the previous contract and that the previous contract or agreement is identical to the one that this Board adopted.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any more discussion on the motion?
I asked you to stop that.
Alderman Willis.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, everybody. I just threw you to the mayor. I was, while reading through everything, it looks like, so we pay half and the Board of Education pays for the other half of the stipend. Is that how that works?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Willis, yes. Dr. Carlson's position, he is the community and school medical advisor. So the burden is taken up by both city and schools in terms of, I mean, this stipended position.
Is there any more discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm sorry, roll call vote.
Alderman Beatty?
Aye. I apologize, I didn't step away. I was trying to do something and I lost the screen. Aye, yes.
Alderman Gainer?
Yes.
Alderman Genitasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Ferente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winterp Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor?
Yeah, a unanimous vote, thank you. Alderman Sutton, Agenda Item Number 8C.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Board approves the resolution confirming commitment and participation in the Regional Household Hazardous Waste Collection Center that is appended to our agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Alderman Genitasio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you to Mayor Blake. Mayor Blake, once again, my question is in regards to funding. Has this waste, hazardous waste collection increased in funding by the Regional Water Authority?
Mr. Chairman, through you to Alderman Genitasio. This adjusts a little bit each and every year. We do fund approximately $55,000 to $65,000 a year to cover this expense. However, it's based on usage. There is a formula for, that takes into account several different elements. However, every time a Milford resident goes to dispose of hazardous waste at the Longworth facility, they have to show their Milford ID. And that's tracked, it's logged, and based on usage is how the majority of the formula is structured. But each and every year, we do budget for approximately the right amount. We get a bill at the end of the year based on, again, usage and some other criteria.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, just to follow up, Mayor Blake, is there any additional charges that the taxpayer would incur, you know, while dropping off any type of material?
It's my understanding that all eligible hazardous material that they do take at this facility is subject to no additional fee by the, by the taxpayer or by the Milford resident. They do also come to our, Trent, I'm sorry. They do also come to our Public Works Facility once a year, usually September, so that Milford residents don't have to drive to Longworth in New Haven. They could drop off their materials right here in Milford.
Okay, thank you. No further questions?
Is there any more discussion on the motion? I don't see any. Roll call vote, Madam Chairman, Madam Secretary, sorry.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Gainer?
Yes.
Alderman Genitasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Ferente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winterp Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you, Madam Secretary. Voting is unanimous. Moving on to Agenda Number 9, There Is No New Business. Opening under Agenda Item Number 10, There Are No Budget Memo Transfers. Agenda Item Number 11. Agenda Item Number Eleven, moving on to refunds. Alderman Sutton, Agenda Item Eleven A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I move that the Board approve refunds in the amount of $175,132.63 as attached to our agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, a roll call vote, Madam Secretary.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Gainer?
Yes.
Alderman Janatasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Ferente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Vitro?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
All in favor?
Thank you, Madam Secretary. We have a unanimous vote. Agenda Item Number Twelve, Reports of Standing Committees. Alderman Frank Smith, Agenda Item Twelve A.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, the ordinance committee met earlier this evening to consider a revision to an ordinance amending Chapter 17.1 Pension Plan for City Employees, Article One and General Section 17.1 through five of the City of Milford Code of Ordinances, employees to whom this chapter does not apply. And in this existing ordinance, there was a Section Five, which this revision taken up tonight will strike, which reads, "Any employee hired in the position of the Operations Director for the Milford Listman Landing Marina", and which is, that particular section will be struck from the ordinance so as to restore eligibility of the new Marina Director. It was voted on and unanimously recommended to the full board for our consideration and our vote tonight. And I would like to, Mr. Chairman, put that forward as a motion.
Thank you, Alderman Frank Smith. Is there, is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Gainer?
Yes.
Alderman Janatasio?
Yes.
Alderman Golden?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
Yes.
Alderman Hardiman?
Yes.
Alderman Harla?
Yes.
Alderman Ferente?
Yes.
Alderman Frank Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Winthrop Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Sutton?
Yes.
Alderman Tranquilly?
Yes.
Alderman Beatty?
Yes.
Alderman Vitale?
Yes.
Alderman Willis?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Vote is unanimous. Thank you, Madam Secretary. Any other reports of standing committees? Hearing none, we're open under Agenda Item Number Thirteen, reports of any of the special committees. Any reports of special committees? Hearing none, we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Fourteen, there is no executive session. Agenda Item Number Fifteen, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have to have a roll call?
Thank you, everyone. Motion, meeting adjourned. Good night.
Good night.
Good night, everyone. Thank you, everyone, for attending the meeting. We'll see you Wednesday night, seven o'clock.